Called us, uh, meeting to order Thursday, December 10th, 2020, our last regular 12th meeting in 2020. I hope, before we start it, before I forget, I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas and a good New Year. Uh, and, well, it's been a challenging year for a lot of, for all of us, uh, at the place. We're all grateful that we still live in the best little city in America, so. Uh, with that, Mr. Rahoney, would you might lead us in indication?
Yes, would you all bow with me, please, reverence to our God. Lord, our most heavenly Father, we recognize your supreme authority and deep love for us as part of your wonderful world creation, and we deeply, and we are deeply humbled by it. As we gather here in an attempt to manage and care and keeping this city and its affairs, we ask your guidance that we would do it in a manner pleasing to you. And as we look forward to this holy season, remind us to care within our minds, the reason we so ardently preserve this time, that being the coming into the world of your son, our Savior, Jesus the Christ, who came to serve us, save us from our sin, and glorify your holy name. We ask also that with so many of us that will be traveling to be with loved ones this holy season, that you would see us all safely to our destinations, and ultimately, again, on our return trip home. Lord, we present this prayer most sincerely in your name, our Father, your son, Jesus the Christ, our Savior and Holy Spirit. Amen.
And what?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, just for everyone to know, Captain Thompson is here via phone. He couldn't, couldn't get here in time for the meeting to start, so, uh, our ordinance allows if there's a majority present, that those not present can join in by phone, so that's, you'll hear his voice, uh, a few times. Also, I'd like to, I'm not gonna read it for the sake of time, but we have issued a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day, which helps us keep our Tree City USA designation, uh, as well as acknowledges the role of trees and beautifying our town. Next up is public forum, and this one, I believe, no one signed up, correct? Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Uh, and the consent agenda this time is just the regular minutes for November 12th and December 1st special call. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? So, thank you, Mr. Cunningham, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Klimmer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to have everybody, um, just refer to my city administrator report, uh, for the sake of time this evening. Just going to quickly highlight that our Christmas in our town officially kicks off today. Uh, it runs from the 10th through the 20th. We'll have carriage rides nightly, uh, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Uh, big difference this year is that you will have to purchase a carriage ride ticket in advance, and these are selling out quickly, so we ask that you go ahead and, and do that soon. Um, also, starting tonight and through the 13th, we have our animal exhibit in Commerce Park. Um, we've got goats and llamas and, and other, other animals for the kids to pet. And then two big, uh, nights are, uh, a live band of Craven Melon on December 18th, and we have the song band on December 19th, both playing, uh, in Commerce Park in conjunction with Christmas in our town.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Bell about that or anything in, in his report, if he had a chance?
Do you have a time for those concerts?
Um...
I wanna say seven.
I believe they do start at seven, but I'll get back to you on that and make sure that we have, uh, adequate social media information posts on those.
Anyone else? Alright, hearing none, we'll get this meeting rolling. Uh, we have, uh, unfinished business, second reading of ordinance AX 2020-006, annex 60 acres across, uh, acres on North Woods Drive into the city limits of Fountain Inn, and zone to C2. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to annex approximately 60 acres on North Woods Drive into the city limits of Fountain Inn, zone the three tax map parcels to C2 Commercial District, and assign the three parcels to Council Ward 1. The plan and commission voted unanimously four to zero in favor of the annexation and zoning to C2 Commercial at the November 9th meeting. Uh, these parcels are surrounded by city limits on three sides to the northeast and west. It was essentially a donut hole or enclave. Uh, parcels had visibility from I-385, and the, uh, development partner for the applicant currently has two other very large mixed-use developments underway in Greenville County. The applicant and the development partner is proposing to construct a large mixed-use development to include 50,000 to 100,000 square feet of commercial space, market rate, multifamily units, green space, and other amenities. I have highlighted the, uh, three parcels on this map, uh, with the green pins. Those are the three, um, that we are considering for annexation and zoning to C2 Commercial District. The applicant and the development partner are here in attendance, uh, tonight, if, uh, anyone has any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Before we get to discussions, is there a motion to approve on second reading of AX 2020-006?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Klimmer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any discussion or questions?
Actually, yeah, so, so I'll be curious, I asked Mr. Bell yesterday, uh, kinda what the potential for the retail piece of that would look like.
Good evening, Mayor, State Council members, Mr. Administrator, thank you. My name is David Dedrickite. I'm with Contour Companies out of Bluefield Hills, Michigan. Uh, to answer your question, uh, we're looking at a commercial frontage for anything from, um, mom-and-pop shops to dining, uh, fast food, um, restaurants, nail boutiques, things that will generate some jobs, but also serve the surrounding community for, um, the workforce that's around the area.
And those would be the ones that would be visible from the interstate?
Yes, sir.
With residential on top?
Top component. So, we're, uh, doing a plan now that possibly has about five stories. First of all, retail is four stories of, uh, residential on top.
Now, looking at the plan, the rest of the residential behind, is that visible from the interstate?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Anyone else? I assume Mr. Thompson does not chime in.
Councilman, do you have any questions?
Okay. Thanks, Jay. Alright, uh, hearing, no other discussion. Um, there's a motion on a second, all those in favor approving, annexation 2020-006 on second reading, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is second reading of ordinance 2020-007, amend hospitality tax ordinance. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for second reading to amend section 18-5 of our Code of Ordinance to define establishments, clarify when hospitality tax payments are due, and to clarify and restate the penalties for late tax filing and payments. Our finance director requested amendment to our current hospitality tax ordinance to allow the department to enforce the ordinance consistently and clearly, and to be able to explain expectations to new and existing establishments responsible for collecting the tax. The amendment clarifies due dates, payment frequency, and adds a 5% late fee instead of a 1.5% late penalty, uh, but it all, but it removes the $500 administrative fee currently charged on late remittances. Uh, this amendment is not intended to be retroactive, and past fees assessed will not be refunded.
Any, uh, is there a motion to approve on second reading, 2020-007? Thank you, Mr. Rahoney, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Derry Berry. Any discussion or questions?
No discussion, just, just a comment. This is a big deal. I think this is great for our restaurants that are struggling during this time, to remove that $500 penalty.
Yes, sir.
So, who knows, to, uh, Ms. Reed for recommending?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Reed. I agree, Mr. Klimmer. I remember many, uh, not many, a few council meetings where we've had businesses ask us about this, uh, $500 fee that sometimes was more than they owed, so, uh, I appreciate the work. Uh, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval on second reading, ordinance 2020-007, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Right along, trying to get you all on early Christmas. Alright, alright, next up is resolution 2020-010, PIBA Plan. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to participate in the state insurance benefits program offered by the South Carolina Public Employee Benefit Authority, otherwise known as PIBA. Currently, the city has engaged broker services for health insurance benefits. This resolution would allow for adopting the state, uh, health insurance offered by PIBA, uh, with an effective date of July 1, 21. And, uh, we have already, our, our initial application has already been accepted. This, the second, uh, piece of, of that application is to have a resolution that is adopted by city council, and there is a, uh, a monetary deposit that is also required to be sent in, and once they, uh, PIBA receives all of that, we'll be eligible to start on the plan 7-1.
Uh, four discussions there. Motion to approve, uh, first and only reading, R2020-010?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Klimmer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, any discussion or comment?
I'm gonna work on this, Mr. Becker, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, just wanna tell everybody, this resolution is different than others. It requires your actual signature, so before you go leave, if it passes, you need to sign.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Rebecca, and Sean, maybe, uh, we had a good workshop around it to answer a lot of questions, uh, and I, uh, it was very informative, and I'm glad we continue to make this better for our employees, and now it'll be not only a little, not only more affordable for those who cover people, but also a lot more stable, because it's a, Sean, it's a four-year commitment, correct, initially, and then we renew?
Correct, yeah. Once, uh...
It approved.
If this is approved, uh, the city is required to stay on the plan for at least four years, and if we were to leave the plan, we wouldn't be able to get back on for another four years.
Gotcha. So, I think our employees can rely on this for the foreseeable future. Any other questions? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor of approval, R2020-010, please say aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up, uh, Mr. Bell, do you wanna take?
Yeah, I'll kind of...
The next four items are all related, and I'll, but we have to vote on each of them separately, so...
So, the, we basically have, uh, one rezoning ordinance for first reading, and we have three annexation ordinances for first reading. The three annexation ordinances can be adopted on first reading, um, all in one, one motion and vote.
Okay.
Uh, so, Z2020-003 is an ordinance to rezone approximately 41 and 1/2 acres from R15 Residential District to R10 Residential District. Plan and commission voted unanimously five to zero in favor of the rezoning at our December 7th meeting. The applicant has stated the rezoning and subsequent annexation of the adjacent property along Bryson Drive is for the construction of a single-family subdivision. The 41 and 1/2 acres does not have road access to Bryson Drive, but it is already, uh, within the city limits. Subject property is recommended for high-density residential land use on, uses on our future land use map, as adopted from the 2017 comprehensive plan. High-density residential is equivalent to any multifamily zoning, uh, and single-family districts zoned to R10 and R7 and 1/2. And, the, uh, I think we can pretty much stop there and, and go for motion, um, but this, uh, red pushpin indicates the 41 and 1/2 acres that are already in the city limits of Fountain Inn that is being requested to be rezoned from R15 to R10. Um, as you can see, we have an R10 subdivision, Bryson Crossing, uh, directly adjacent to it.
And then the other three, since are the...
Yes, the other three red pushpins, uh, indicate 7.787 acres, 3.66 acres, and .071 acres respectively, uh, and that would be asked to annex into the city limits of Fountain Inn, to zone all three to R10 Residential District and assign them to Council Ward 1. Uh, those three parcels are all currently located in unincorporated Greenville County, even though they are immediately adjacent to the city of Fountain Inn city limits. Those three are all currently zoned RS, residential suburban, which is not a zoning category that we have. The subject properties are located on both sides of Bryson Drive.
But they're all for the same purpose?
Correct.
Okay. That's why we're...
So, Mayor, I, I would have, uh, a motion and a vote first on the, uh, rezoning ordinance, 2020-003, and then a separate, uh, motion and vote for the three annexation ordinances. And the reason why those three are, are, uh, split up is because there are different property owners for all three, actually all four, um, and so it would make, uh, one, a single ordinance very confusing with that many, uh, owners.
Gotcha, okay. So, uh, is there a motion to approve on first reading, rezoning 2020-003, rezone 41 and 1/2 acres from R15 to R10 to tax map ending in 400?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Derry Berry. Discussion?
So, from the other evening, I think you already said this, but, um, Bryson Crossing is R10, and it's right across the street, so it'd be similar in density as that piece. What about on the other side of that?
From the preliminary, uh, layout that we received, this side, I believe, was going to be townhomes, uh, and the rest was gonna be just your regular single-family residential subdivision.
And then the other piece to going closer to town, what's, is, is that homes there too already?
Here?
Go to the right.
This?
Above the black, the yellow.
Here?
Yeah, right there.
That is, um, the Fleming property. That is actually where the cows are on, on Howard Drive, so there are no structures really there. There's a house way back there where they live, um, and then below that on Howard Drive is where the Fox Chase subdivision is being constructed now.
So, all there will be, um, zone 1, right? What ones are all the...
Council Ward 1 is where, um, that would be located, correct?
So, this is first reading?
Yes, sir.
And at this point, we have little information about what the developer's planning to do here. I would hope that at some point in this process, that he or she give us some kind of indication of what types of structures they'll be, so we can be more informed and have, uh, a greater insight.
And the other thing?
Am I, I'm sorry?
No, no, no.
Am I overstepping that there?
Well, the one across the street has got a big sign that says, "Starting in the 200s", so...
That doesn't mean anything to me, you know? Um, I, I wanna, I wanna see some renderings.
Oh, I agree.
And, um, you know, just a, a better plan of what we got now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, Mr. Derry, I'm sorry.
No, I know it's just reading, and I'm remembering from Monday's meeting, there was concern about traffic in the area and improvement of the roads, and also concerned about preservation of the local African-American history in that area. Um, and I never did hear more about that, so I'm a little bit naive as far as of that thing.
Well, I believe where Bryson Elementary is located, I believe that is the former location of Bryson High School, which was the African-American high school. Um, so I, I believe that's kinda where that statement stems from. Um, yes, Bryson Drive is, is a heavily trafficked road, and, um, but it does, I think those peak hours during school time are when it, when it's worse. Um, there is a, a traffic impact study that they have done. I haven't dove too much into it, but I, I know that the traffic impact study has indicated some improvements are, are gonna be needed.
There's a little improvement made at Bryson with, I know the business going in right there.
Because the traffic is very congested already during the, uh, the school areas.
It is.
So, I'm, I'm like Mr. Mahoney, you may be seeing more details exactly how it's gonna affect that, that area where the residences are already there, and how the traffic flow is gonna be playing a major part in there.
And the fact that there's, uh, this isn't dated yet right now, but the fact that these include annexations, I think that it's much more appropriate that those things be in front of us. I know when you're considering a rezoning, you have to look at just the pure zoning, but with annexation, we can, we, those are good questions to ask, Mr. Bell.
So, do we have to vote on it, so we can take it, and we can give more information?
Well, there's a second vote that would happen in January before it's approved.
Yeah, we could, we could wait, and hopefully we would see something before the second vote, otherwise, we might find it hard time to get it passed.
That really could be real packed in there. Alright, so, we have a motion and a second on first reading. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about some more information on, I guess, maybe the impact study, Mr. Bell, as well as what it might look like, or, if they're intention, 'cause, uh, so, maybe that comes out in January. Uh, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Uh, all those in favor of approving on first reading, Z2020-003, the rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next is all three annexations, I'll read them out, uh, grouped together, annexation, AX 2020-007, 2020-008, 2020-009. Uh, is there a motion to approve on first reading? So moved. Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, is there a second? All second. All those, uh, any discussion or questions? This is related to the sand project. Hearing none. All those in favor of approval on first reading, annexation 2020-007, dash 008, dash 009, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is rezone, uh, Z2020-004, rezone 0.16 acres, uh, from R12 to neighborhood commercial. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for first reading to rezone 0.16 acres from R12 Residential District to NC Neighborhood Commercial District. Plan and commission voted unanimously in favor of the rezoning at our December 7th meeting. Property owner stated that, uh, the portion of the property has always been used as a commercial space. Former use was a liquor store, which has, uh, since been relocated on South Main Street. It's now half-occupied by a musician. Uh, since the property is zoned, R12, any existing commercial use on the property would be considered non-conforming to the property. After six months of non-use on the property, it would revert, uh, to only allowing residential use. No further commercial uses could be located on the property, uh, without rezoning. By zoning this portion of the parcel to neighborhood commercial, instead of the broader C2, it prevents another liquor store or other undesirable land use from locating there in the future. Uh, the requirements of neighborhood commercial are designed to ensure that the commercial development is aesthetically, uh, compatible with neighboring residential properties and will not create a nuisance due to noise, traffic generation, lighting, or appearance. Neighborhood commercial is typically located at the intersection of two collector streets or a collector street and an arterial street near developed residential neighborhoods. You will notice, uh, this black pushpin right here on South Main Street, the properties to the north are zoned, uh, C2 Commercial, and this property and the properties to the south and east are all zoned R12. So, rather than this portion of this property being, uh, rezoned to C2, Plan and Commission and staff, that is more appropriate to zone at neighborhood commercial.
Is there a motion on, on before discussion, looking on first reading, Z2020-004?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Derry Berry, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Klimmer, any questions or comments?
So, the zoning board has reviewed this, yeah, okay.
And I will say, originally, the applicant had sought C2, but agreed with staff on going to neighborhood commercial, which is a little more restricted. And this is a portion of the parcel technically?
Correct.
But it's just a corner, a corner story. Any other questions or comments? Alright, there's a motion and a second for approval on first reading of Z2020-004. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is rewatch property acquisition. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh, for the approval of an agreement to acquire 9.28 acres from Renewable Water Resources with REWAH. Uh, this is the agreement made between REWAH and the city of Fountain Inn to purchase for $1, 9.28 acres currently owned by REWAH. Uh, the, uh, land will be used by the city to build a new Fountain Inn natural gas and public works facility. All ingress and egress easements have been executed, and Lorenz Electric will be moving the electrical infrastructure at the intersection of Telfair and Boyd Street and the access driveway. Um, our city attorney, Mr. Holmes, did all the legwork as far as the agreement. It's a pretty, pretty standard. Um, this is a project the city's been working on, uh, for a while now, and we believe we've done all of the, uh, work that was necessary to get to this point, and at this point, council would be asked to approve this agreement.
Is it one reading?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve rewatch property acquisition?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, any discussion?
Huge, yeah. I'm really tickled with this. This will help our downtown so much.
Much needed for our crews.
Yep.
They're slam-packed in there.
I have a question, but I can ask it at a later time.
Um, I know this may be one of our, something we said in our, talked about in our goal-setting session in January, but, Mr. Bell, what's, or Mr. Noriega, or Mr. Case, what's, the number's cases in here, or Lori, the dream timeline for this to kinda get rolling a little bit more now that this is part is done?
Sure. So, so once, now that the acquisition of the property is, is hopefully imminent, uh, we've already had initial conversations with some, uh, engineering firms and, and architects. I think probably the next step would be for, uh, some engineers and architects to come on site, take a look at our current facilities. Uh, we've already talked to them about what our current operations are and what our, our future needs are gonna be, but I think they just kinda wanna see that in practice, um, and then we would, uh, start looking at, you know, putting together some sort of a conceptual, uh, and then, uh, I'd like for us, you know, there's no reason why we can't do it in, uh, first half of '21, to get a, uh, an RFP out for, uh, I, I'd like to do a, a design build, probably, um, so where we would ask for teams of contractors and architects and engineers to, to bid, uh, for their qualifications on it and, uh, and go from there. So, I, I would say, you know, probably a, a contract would be, could be awarded to a contractor or architect-engineering team sometime in '21.
So, we'll be budgeting for this for next fiscal year, pretty much?
Sure.
And I'd like to say, if we, uh, when they do that, when they need, go on towards it, I, if it's okay with you, staff, Mr. Bell, I have, make sure you let council know if it's put on the calendar. I'd like to be able to hear from staff about what they're kinda hoping for and wanting, and then feedback from the engineers and everything, and others probably too, so, they're available. Alright, we have, any other questions or comments?
No, I, because I'd like to kinda know the impact it would be to the neighborhoods.
Yeah, that part too, yeah.
Yeah, I, I will say, uh, 9.28 acres is, is pretty big for, I mean, especially considering what, where we're at now. Um, I think our property now is less than an acre. Um, so there, there's gonna be substantial vegetation. Uh, I think we are only gonna probably impact this 9.28 acres minimally. Uh, there's currently a pump station, uh, from REWAH there with the, there, it was gonna be long-term, uh, future, but it's probably gonna happen sooner rather than later. They're gonna take that pump station offline, so almost the entire property is, is gonna be available, uh, for us, but we don't see a, a...
Yeah, for that part too.
Yeah, I will say nine point two eight acres is pretty big for, I mean, especially considering what, where we're at now. I think our property now is less than an acre. So there's going to be substantial vegetation. I think we are only going to probably impact this nine point two eight acres minimally. There's currently a pump station from Rewa there with the, it was going to be long-term future, but it's probably going to happen sooner rather than later. They're going to take that pump station offline. So almost the entire property is going to be available for us, but we don't see a need to construct on that entire nine acres.
Hopefully, this will be the best $1 we spent.
That's right.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of Rewa Property Acquisition, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. And next is, and last, is gas department policies.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Fountain Inn Natural Gas Director Edward Noriega, ever since he has been here, has been continually reviewing our natural gas billing office policies. We have a couple revisions for you on policies 113 and 121. The revisions on policy 113, the main ones are that it removes the renter category for deposits charged by Fountain Inn Natural Gas. So we will only have two categories for deposits, landlords, and then also homeowners and renters. Deposits for homeowners and renters will either be $0, $100, or $200 based on their credit report on the online utility exchange credit check. It's not, if I go score, it's a little bit different. Customers who don't provide a social security number or don't have credit history or have had some issues in the past, in the past five years, will be charged an automatic $200 deposit. And then the other major change is that customers would only be allowed to carry a $1,000 positive balance or credit on their account. Any amount over $1,000 on their account will be refunded to the customer promptly by check. And then policy 121, we have, we are removing the requirement that a payment arrangement must be made in person. And then also those entering a payment arrangement must go on ACH or Automatic Credit Card Payment for at least 12 months. And then if a payment arrangement is not honored, then our standard $85 delinquent fee will be reinstated to the account, and service will be scheduled for disconnection. Those are the major changes to policies 113 and 121.
Is there a motion for approval out of the changing gas department policies?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Haroney. Any questions or discussion?
What's the difference between landlords and homeowners and renters?
What the, when the landlord always owns responsible, let's start with landlord. Landlord is responsible for the property. So if the rental, if the renter, as people come and go, when they deactivate their account, they automatically goes to the landlord for that period of time, which is they can. We do treat them a little different rentals because they can disappear quicker than homeowners. And in the past, sometimes we have a worse history with renters than we do with homeowners about regarding back credit and all that. But there was some a little bit of disparities, and we noticed we were treating them a little bit differently. So now we're just going on a more customer. So there's no more renters and, and homeowners just all customers. And then the landlords, because they own, you know, it's a business, so we treat them a little more differently.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor of approval of the gas department policy changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. I hope everyone has a great Christmas and a happy new year. Please be safe, be near in your family, and please go enjoy our Christmas festival. Is there a question to return?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.